All right, I'll call to order this meeting of the Katari Planning Commission. And... Let's roll the call.
Chair Ford?
Here.
Vice Chair O'Nines?
Here.
Commissioner Brady?
Here.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yeah.
Commissioner Moore?
Here.
All right, and now, we have minutes from March 21st. It's been awhile. So, did anybody find any corrections needed to those minutes?
Move to approve?
My second. Okay. Moved by Commissioner Moore, seconded by Commissioner Hancock. Any objections to approving those minutes? Okay. Consider those approved. And we'll move on to matters... Oh, no, changes to the agenda. Any changes?
No, Mr. Chair, there are no changes.
Okay. For our unwritten communications, since there's no public in the room, I'll open public comment and close public comment, and we'll move on to matters at hand. So, number one, an amendment to Chapter 17.38 of the Katari Municipal Code regulating signs, also to 17.90. So, it's a resolution of Planning Commission, the City of Katari recommending City Council adoption of an ordinance amending Chapter 17.38 titled Signs and 17.90, definitions of the Katari Municipal Code to ensure content neutrality in temporary and off-site signage. So, is our staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Wanted to call your attention quickly to the resolution. This is page 13... Excuse me, 14 of your packet. Beginning at the very bottom of that, the last sentence, and carrying over to the next page, this is auto-fill language that updates through our Minute Track Program, our Legislative Agenda Management Program, and it, in error, has the City Council information in there, but that is the only error in the resolution. So, if the Commission votes tonight to adopt the resolution, we'd like the direction to just make that one change with the accurate information in there.
So, just change City Council to Planning Commission and delete successor agency, the former blah blah blah?
Exactly, and it would also automatically delete the signature block for the city attorney because she doesn't sign except for council resolutions.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I will explain the item before you. As the staff report mentions, this amendment is necessary in light of a couple of recent lawsuits and the settlements or the decisions out of those lawsuits. And basically, the two court cases hinge on two items, the first being the need for content neutrality in the text of signage, in other words, the inability to regulate differentially based on the message of the sign. And the second court decision reaffirms, if you will, a city or a county's right to regulate commercial signage and off-site signage. So, those two court cases combined really got us to the need to strip our current sign regulations of anything that was content-based, of any regulations that were content-based, and to affirm our ability to continue to regulate commercial and off-site signage, so that those are really the kernels of the amendments that are here. I'm happy to talk about the two court cases in depth if you... If anybody has questions about those, but the basics of them are put out in the staff report, and I'd like to jump straight to the necessary amendments for our codes. And your packet page, starting on page 15, is... Sorry, page 16, really is the underlined strikeout version of the ordinance. And the first section there, Section 1738.035, this is the section dealing with sign exemptions. And again, in underline and strikeout, we've reaffirmed, if you will, the state requirements for fuel sales tax and the need to advertise very specific requirements required for fuel stations. At the same time, we've struck the information having to do with real estate signs because those are, again, allowed by the state and we didn't need to differentially regulate those. So, the Section C, temporary signs, we've clarified that these temporary signs that are exempt from permits are the non-commercial signage. So, these, as you can see in the strikeout, were previously the real estate signs, the construction and subdivision signs. Those are both the ones that advertise a coming subdivision as well as just information that the contractors may need to locate the site. Those are referred to as construction subdivision signs. We've also removed the specific regulations for political and social issue signs, and I'll get back to those in a second. And that Section E, miscellaneous signs, we've clarified that those items, 1 through 4, street addresses, flags, ornamentation, decoration, and architectural markers, do not constitute signs, signage for the city. So, those two continue to be... Those as well are exempt from requirements. So, jumping back a second to the Section C, the non-commercial temporary signs, our current code has very specific regulations for each of the different types that you see in the strikeout. So, real estate signs had one set of parameters under which they could be displayed. Construction signs had others. Political or social issue, often thought of as election signage, those had another. So, what we've done is removed the distinctions among those various sign types and just classified them all as non-commercial temporary signage. So, what we did do with the duration is, as you see there on your packet page 16, the duration for temporary signs, and again, this would be across the board for any non-commercial temporary signs, are allowed for a maximum of 70 consecutive days and no more than two times per year. And this timeframe was previously election signage. That's what the city allowed for election signs. And so, we took that, thinking that was probably the preeminent need for folks to be able to express their views, and we applied that to all the signage. So, they all now can be up for that same period of time, the 70 consecutive days and two times per year.
Do we have... For a quick question?
Sure.
So, on the election signs, somebody can have an election sign up for 70 days, twice a year?
That's correct. Which currently, the sign code allows them to be up 60 days prior to the election date and must be down 10 days following the election. So, we took that same 70 days and applied it to all the temporary signage. Correct?
Okay.
But I think... I mean, the point is, somebody could have it up for 70 days, take it down for a day, do another 70 days, so in effect, have 140 almost consecutive days.
They could. They could, under this. They could, but then they... And as always, the election signage is, at some point or another, becomes a code enforcement issue or can become a code enforcement issue. Generally, people are pretty good about it. But if they did that for 140 days, they wouldn't get to do it again for a June election. So, say they did it in November, they wouldn't be able to do it again in June. So, they would be... If they chose to do that, they would be limiting their ability to post their views again in that year.
Okay.
Well, so on that, is that a calendar year or a sliding year?
Absent anything else, we would consider it calendar year.
Okay.
We can make that clarification, if you like.
And is there... I mean, is it implicit in here, the one day between being taken down? I mean, usually, there is a more distinct period defined for a gap, if there's...
We could do that as well. We do, in some of our other signage regulations, the banner permits, for example, we do require, I think it's 14 days in between postings.
Because I think it would be... I mean, I guess we'll have for discussion in a minute.
Yeah, let's hold off on that. Okay, so...
Okay.
Sorry.
And as you might expect, for exempt and largely residential signs, it's in here currently that they should not be illuminated. On number and size, again, this, we fell back to the social issue signs. These are currently the total aggregate sign area of 12 square feet in residential zoning districts and 20 square feet in non-residential zoning districts are the current limitations for social issue signs. So, again, we took those parameters and applied them across the board. And I think, and with height, the six feet in height is what is allowed for the real estate signs, so that's where we landed with the height limit as well. And then, as you go down through that page, you'll see that the rest of that section is proposed for striking from the current regulations. One important thing to notice is that if someone did want to post construction or subdivision signs, I'm not talking about the permanent monumentation that might identify a neighborhood, but rather, the temporary signage that's up during construction. They could do that through approval of a development application, so design review and planning commission approval, or they could ask for it through a limited term permit, which is the way that we permit models and construction trailers. So, there are other mechanisms for them, for those types of signs to be permitted. Skipping down to page 18 of your packet, the prohibited signs, this really is a bit of a cleanup item in that the code was a little inconsistent in that it prohibited penance in one area but allowed them in another area of the code. So, this does two things. It does allow them, so rather than taking away that right, we just went with they're allowed, but they can't be allowed simply for this list of events, athletic events, carnivals, circuses, et cetera. So, any event that the city approved could now get penance and streamers approved along Again, on the temporary signs, we struck the construction signs that gave the specific requirements or allowances for that type of sign. We struck those. Off-site directional signs, even though, well, directions to a business can... are obviously content-based. So, again, we struck that requirement, that it simply be a directional sign, and so what this allows for is an off-site sign for commercial purposes. These signs would not be exempt from a city process, so at a minimum, they would go through an administrative sign permit, and depending on the scale of what they were requesting, might also go through design review and planning commission. So, they're required to be permitted, but off-site signage of a variety could be allowed right now through a public process. And again, if you see under Section B, they... Those also are limited to only one and height maximum of six feet. And then, the final amendments, actual amendments, that we haven't yet discussed were simply the definitions. So, mid-page, page 21, the definitions that are no longer necessary, construction sign, directional sign, off-site directional sign, political signs, real estate signs, and subdivision directional signs have all, under this proposal, would be eliminated from the definitions. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy, as I said, to answer any questions that you have or take feedback if you think the wording needs to be clearer in some areas.
Any questions for staff?
I have a question. So, years ago, we adopted a pretty strict sign ordinance for campaigns because there was these huge, huge signs being put up everywhere in town, and after that election, it was like, we're not going to do that anymore. So, this kind of reverts back to that. People can have these huge signs in town now for their election? They can have a residential sign, 12 by 6?
No. I mean, I guess I'm just... Go ahead. Wondering what the differences are. Yeah. Actually, what you see for, let's see, bottom of the page 17 of your packet, item number three, political and social issue signs, those are current... Those are the current allowances under the adopted code. So, currently, someone can have a total aggregate area of 12 square feet on a residential property, and that aggregate of 12 is both sides of the sign, plus any sign. So, if you had two that were two by two and both sides were printed and visible, that would be eight square feet. And so, they're already on their way.
Each one would be eight square feet.
Each... Sorry, yes, thank you. Each one of those would be eight square feet. So, you get to that aggregate of 12 pretty quickly. It essentially allows for three regular-size election signs. And then, in the commercial district, it's slightly higher. Commercial zones, it's slightly higher, at 20 square feet, and that's generally because those... I've always interpreted it to be generally because they have to be set back from the road a little bit further than you would in residential zones, so they're a little harder to see.
Okay.
So, it is a little bit higher.
But those square footages that are struck through at the bottom of page 17 are the same square footage as is underlined at the top of page 17, so the sizes allowable haven't changed?
That's correct.
Yes, I guess I was a little confusing to...
Yeah. Commissioner Hancock, you have a question?
Yeah, I've got a general sort of purpose. On the Lamar case, we're seeing the digital, off-site digital billboard, off-site billboard signs to a digital format, and I'm really looking at digital format versus also the non... The lighting, non-internal lighting or external lighting. Can you just explain a little bit what the interpretation might be for that?
Sure. The Lamar case, the courts did not... The digital format wasn't a part of their decision-making, so that, in and of itself, wasn't something they took up. It was just that that was the application that Lamar made to the City of Los Angeles that they were initially denied for, so that was what was appealed. For us, we don't allow moving characters in the signage, and so if someone in the... The fuel stations are a great example of this. Their technology and their signs has been going to a digital format, so they're not out there changing out the little letters, and those are allowed so long as, and we have them sign off on this, that those don't move. They're stationary, but they're LED and they can be programmed from outside. So, we do allow that format, but just as long as it's not moving, if that helps.
So, the way that would apply to the other signs in Katari that are non-illuminated is, is there could be a digital format that's in there, so long as there isn't a LED inside it, or...
For the non-illuminated signs?
Mm-hmm.
I suppose they could. I've only seen illuminated digital formats, but I guess if someone wanted to do a digital non-illuminated sign, they could. We have several restrictions on illumination of signs in the existing code, so that, by far, I think the preference is for external illumination. It's just more in keeping with, I think, the prioritized design aesthetics of the city that the city has adopted. So, we really try and discourage internally illuminated signs unless they're already in the center or already on the building.
So, that would include LEDs?
It would, yes.
Any more questions?
Sure, I have a question. Okay, on page 19, under temporary signs, says G. Can you just tell me how that's different or how it's changed?
Yes, this is really clarifying... The changes in G are really clarifying that these allowances and limitations are only for commercial signs, so they're not applying to anyone's residential, any of the temporary signs. It's making a distinction between the temporary signs that are allowed in residential zones, which are largely exempt from permits, and making a distinction between those and the ones that can be permitted on commercial property. So, these are really just cleaning up those, thinking about if we're no longer allowing or allowed to make distinctions based on content and everybody gets the same allowance, are we sure we're okay with that? And really, the only one that I felt was missing was that there was no strict limitation for an off-site advertising sign for a business. So, that was why D is added, that if you get a permit for a temporary banner, it should be on the property that the business is located on.
You want Assistant Director, Mr. Plante?
Yes.
Any more questions? Okay, let's move to discussion.
Are you going to open it up?
Time for public comment. Anybody wish to comment on this matter? Seeing no one, I'll close public comment. Now, let's move to discussion. Thank you.
I would like to see a little bit more definition in terms of the time periods and the space between them.
So, in 1738.035, C1, you want to add a gap? Page 16, towards the bottom?
I think it would be good to specify either a sliding year or a calendar year, just so that it's clear. One of the...
So, I'm hearing two things. One, it proposes to insert... Well, do you want calendar? Calendar's easier to understand.
I think calendar's easier to understand, yeah.
Insert... You're proposing we insert calendar before year in the second line of C1, and do you have wording for the gap?
No more than two times per calendar year with 14 days between each appearance.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
If I could comment on that, in case it's of interest to anyone else while you're I think if we want to be clear about the gap, we'll call it the gap, we could make that much greater than 14 days, because none of the other signage types would happen that frequently, that could not otherwise be permitted. So, for example, the construction and subdivision signs, if the applicant came in through a development project or a limited term permit, the commission could approve whatever timeframe they requested. So, really, with this timeframe, the most frequent thing we'll be regulating will be social issue signs. So, we could make it as much as six months or three or four months, whatever the commission was comfortable with. And I have some language that I can offer, if you want to go that way.
So, six months between wouldn't allow for two 70-day periods a year, so I wouldn't want to do that much. Maybe more like 30 days is a reasonable gap between...
Yeah, I just, you know, I go back to the whole political sign thing, like, somebody could have this one for 70 days, take it down for a day, and then put them right back up for 70 days. That's a lot of days to have political signs. And to me, that almost becomes like a blight. And that's one of the reasons, I mean, we had that originally, was not to have a certain season and then have it be done. So, I don't even know how you... I know we have to adhere to new regulations, but, you know, I would like to just not have that.
Mm-hmm. But how do people feel about the 30-day gap?
I would be happy to go for more, two months to go up there. I mean, 70 days is two and a quarter months.
Yeah, two and a half months.
So, having maybe an equal, even using the same language, 70 days between sign being allowed up for 70 days and having to come down for 70 days, there's a simple symmetry there, but I think the definite sort of thing should be, it should allow for a June something or the other, and then allow for a November something, so...
So, what's, like, 70 days before the election?
September 1st. You want to be up September 1st after an early June election, so that's basically 70 days, because you're up for July and August and half of June.
I wouldn't agree to something like that. That seems like you could have, like you were saying.
So, then...
Why don't you give us your wording? Yeah.
I was going to say, so maybe to allow people a period between June and September, maybe is the way, maybe is the critical path there. So, if the June election is the first week in June and we're giving them 10 days to take it down, that would take us till mid-June, so then July, August, so two and a half months in between.
Right, so 70 days. That's where we were getting the 70, yeah. So, do you want to tell us your wording, and then we can have more discussion about it?
Sure. Following on with Commissioner Hancock's suggestion of calendar year after year and before unless, just inserting with a minimum of blank days between postings, that would be clear for staff, what we were trying to accomplish.
With a minimum of 70 days between postings?
Yes.
And you're... That set off as a... I think that would make most sense if that was a parenthetical statement rather than just set off between commas. That way, the unless applies to the posting period, not the gap period.
Sure.
Fair. So, comments on the 70... Writing a 70-day gap between the 70-day posting periods. This is for all temporary signs, not just political and social issues. All temporary, non-commercial signs, sorry.
I'd like your idea, 30 days.
Do you want to expand at all on your reasons for preference for 30? Or turn your mic on first?
It's not really for us to dictate to... I mean, 70 days seems a bit punitive if someone wants to put up a sign to post their political feelings. 30 days should be enough to remove the blight or make an act. I'd be comfortable with either one, but I think that 30 days is fine. And, yes?
30 days for the gap?
Yeah, that's what he's suggesting would be. Given that there's still a limit of two 70-day periods in a calendar year, we're just talking about slight shifts in when those 70-day periods are. Any more comments on that? Current proposed?
I'm like having a block. I feel like I'm so focused on political signage, but examples of non-commercial temporary signs, like what other things would be? Because I'm trying to think of then what other, you know what I mean? Like I'm only now can think of political signage. So what, can you give me examples or can you think of any?
Would be like the accordion festival signs?
Yeah, I mean, the ones that are being struck are the most common ones. So in my travels around the city, the most frequent ones I see are real estate signs directing you to open houses and mostly open houses. And usually nonprofit event signs that are posted around. So those are the most common ones. And again, these are the ones that are exempt from permit requirements. So they're not the, they're not going to be the banners, they're not going to be, you know, pennants and that stuff that's more typically associated with commercial. But yeah, it's hard to imagine that's what someone might put up. I mean, fundamentally, it could be a giant sign, you know, or anything that was, that someone wanted to say that they were, you know, supporting. So currently, if someone had a lot of signage on their property that was unassociated with a social issue, say like support for an athletic team or something, our code enforcement division would probably ignore it unless it was up for a terrible amount of time, a long period of time, and it was getting weather-beaten and ragged, or it was, you know, in the way of a driver, and then they might ask for it to be removed. In this case, if someone were to do that, and someone in this... So in this case, if someone were to do it, we would have this additional hurdle to say, when was it put up? Has it been up for 70 days or more? But fundamentally, it could be any sign that someone wanted to show their support for an issue.
Ms. O'Nines?
I hate to bring this up in an example, but in Vallejo, there's a sign that says, "Get us out of the UN now." It's been up there for about five years.
Right.
When I think of this, this is what comes to mind.
Right. Though that is, in some sense, a political sign, you could argue. Yeah. And some of the things that are struck from this section are commercial temporary signs, like real estate signs. So real estate signs now technically need a permit, right? If you're going to sell your house, you've got to get a permit now to put the sign up if we pass this. Is that correct?
No, the... They're allowed to put signs up by the state law, the civil code section that I included in the packet. And so they would continue to be allowed to do that. Our code adopted additional regulations on top of that. And so that's what we'd be eliminating. But the interesting thing with real estate signs is that they are allowed to advertise off-site. So they're a little bit of a hybrid of commercial signage in residential zones due to the nature of what they do.
Great. Okay, so I think the current issue is the gap period.
Got a question just on that.
Yes.
So a question again on the signs. If somebody had a commercial sign that they were putting up, they were making it look like something that wasn't maybe a barbecue place, would that, when it fitted within this inviting people to a party, a barbecue party, would that fit within this? Or would it be very clearly, as I'm thinking really something that transitioning to a billboard, almost?
You mean you're having a birthday party?
No, a commercial, a commercial property that is looking to not be strictly visible as a commercial, but saying, "Come along to a party at a particular place."
Yes, the proposed amendments don't really touch the commercial signage very much at all. So that, the type of event that you're describing would require, it's usually done through a banner permit. That's usually what folks are asking for. I could envision it maybe being an A-frame sign, which are also exempt. But those would be the two most likely types to advertise that kind of special, you know, Wednesday night special thing. And those wouldn't, would be unchanged under the amendments.
Okay. Okay, back to the gap. I'm going to put in that I don't think it matters very much whether we say 30 or 70 days. I think it's important to have some gap listed to give code enforcement a chance. Otherwise, you've got to check the thing every day to know whether it came down, which is never going to happen. So I think 30 or 70 would be fine. And given that it's still the same amount of time within a calendar year, I don't have a strong preference, but I think it would be appropriate if somebody wanted to make a motion to amend the resolution, the changes to the ordinance right now.
I think, I won't make a motion yet, but I think I, I think it does matter. I think, especially with what got us into changing this language in the first place, I think it's better to kind of like err on, I think, letting the people have their voice. So I think, just in when they want to. So I think maybe lessening the gap, I think, is more important when it's their property and their signage. I mean, I think, you know, I think noting a gap is appropriate. I think that could actually help with the enforcement piece. But I think not necessarily enlarging the gap so much is necessary.
So would you be comfortable with the 30-day?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's sufficient.
Well, I'll make a motion then on that to add the language of calendar, per calendar year, with a minimum of 30 days between postings.
In parentheses?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not too sure what difference it makes. I mean, I understand what you're talking about there, but...
Well, just right after that, it says comma, unless a longer time period is granted. And if it's not in parentheses, then that's referring to the 30 days, not to the 70.
In parentheses.
Does that motion have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion? Any... Do we need a roll call on that? I never know.
You should, yes.
Okay, we'll take a roll call on that amendment to the ordinance.
Chair Ford?
Yes.
Vice Chair O'Nines?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
All right, so we're back to the ordinance now with those things added. Any other issues we want to talk through? I had one thing I wanted to bring up that was, I found it pretty confusing to read the 035 temporary signs section in conjunction with the 070 temporary signs. And I would, I think it would be clearer if the 035C, if the title of it was non-commercial temporary signs and the title of 070G was commercial temporary signs.
We can make that change. In reality, the code sections are separated by quite a bit of other...
Sure.
...text and regulations. And the distinguishing characteristics between the two are whether you're exempt from a permit or not.
I know, but nobody reads them that way anymore. You go to the website and you search signs and you get all these subsections and you click on them. And if one of them says temporary signs, non-commercial temporary signs are allowed, and then you go to another one and it says, here are the requirements for commercial temporary signs. I just think it'd be clearer if they were...
No, I think so.
Set apart with different titles. So I guess I'm making a motion to make that change.
Second.
Okay, any discussion of that?
Could you be...
Yeah, in 1738-035 on page 16, insert non-commercial at the beginning of letter C. So it says, "Non-commercial temporary signs." And then on page 19, in 1738-070G, insert "commercial" before temporary signs.
Good, thanks, I might.
Does it have a second? Okay. Any discussion? Can we roll call on that?
Chair Ford?
Yes.
Vice Chair O'Nines?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
All right, any other issues to talk about? If there are none, does anybody want to make a motion? The draft resolution is on page 14.
I'll make a motion for the resolution of planning commission of the City of Qatati recommending city council adoption of an ordinance amending chapter 17.38 to the signs and 17.90 definitions of the Qatari Misible Code to ensure content neutrality in temporary and off-site signage.
Is there a second?
Oh, thank you. If I could, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So are you going to talk about the change at the bottom? Okay.
Okay, with the changes of the city council, the city council of the City of Qatati and the successor agency being to the former Qatati Community Development Agency being struck, and also the city attorney attachments being struck.
And insert planning commission.
What?
And insert planning commission.
And insert planning commission.
Thank you. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. With that change, can we have a roll call, please?
Chair Ford?
Yes.
Vice Chair O'Nines?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
All right, thank you. That was our only matter at hand. Any reports by staff?
Yes, thank you all for that. Got a few updates here for you. First, about development projects, excuse me. The Santero Way multifamily project that's seemingly been around for quite a while is actually on its way to design review committee. We're picking a date right now. It'll be in September, one of the meetings in September. And that project, I think I mentioned once before, is still very similar to what you saw last time. They have added commercial to it, but have come to the city with a request for additional density under the state density bonus law. So the project, it's not so much that the project has changed, but the regulatory lens through which we evaluate it has changed. And there are several new benefits to the project, I will say. So it'll be interesting for you all to see it again. What I think of as the companion project to that, the 100 Valparaiso map amendment, that one is currently, we're going through the environmental work on that one, so it will follow actually not that far behind. And then on a small matter, the Village Walk project, that's the one on East Qatati at Lancaster, near the gym, between the gym and Lancaster. They have requested a design change that will be going to DRC and coming to the planning commission as well. And then we have a use permit in process for resale clothing location in the Exchange Bank. So that one's still a bit away from a hearing date yet, so I don't know exactly where that one will land, but it's in process. And then on public works projects, just to give you a couple of quick updates, the Northern Gateway Project on Old Redwood Highway at 116, the CMU wall that you all chose the design mosaics for, that will begin this week. So it'll be exciting to finally see something coming up. And the mosaic, they'll get the wall all put in place with a finish on it, and then the mosaic will start probably two weeks after that. So within three weeks, we should start seeing the colorful mosaics on there. The streetlights and the trees will be going in at the end of August, so that's going to make a huge change as well. The lighted crosswalk, that'll be probably another week or 10 days after that, so 1st of September for the lighted crosswalk. So that's all very exciting. The South Old Redwood Highway project, the one that has some closures happening on Old Red, that one, well, as a matter of fact, that will be closed, Old Redwood Highway will be closed Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of this week for that work, and then open after that, so it'll be intermittent closures. That project will be more or less complete by the end of September. And that's basically a pavement rehab project. But that also will get a lighted crosswalk at Page Street, so lots of good pedestrian improvements going in. Hopefully, you've all had a chance to notice the median planting in the trees on 116 over by Redwood Drive. That looks really nice. We all miss the cones. Don't you miss the cones that run the tree well? And Falletti, I'm sure you, everybody's been watching that one go in. The picnic benches and the water station should be installed next week. And as soon as that's done, the project will more or less be done, except for some final inspections. And then on West Qatati, the water main replacement that's going on, you've seen the saw cutting, I'm sure. That one will be, that's a water main upgrade from a four-inch to an eight-inch. And that one will be under construction through the end of September, has a five- or six-week construction time associated with it. So those are my updates, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Would you clarify Old Redwood Highway through Qatati is going to be closed for three days?
It will be closed, yes, for three days between roughly Myrtle, Old Redwood, I mean, sorry, Valparaiso and Myrtle and William and George. Charles, I'm sorry. So that section, and there will be diversion, just as there was today. So that section gets completely closed off and the diversions happen around Myrtle and over to West Sierra on Valparaiso.
But only as far as Charles, not all the way to East Qatati?
Only as far as Charles, correct, yes. The city did arrange for the downtown businesses to utilize the parking lot behind Exchange Bank so that if folks are coming in from those off streets and they can't get across Old Redwood Highway, they'll have the two public parking now, a public parking area on the east side as well as the west side.
Any more questions for staff? And was that it?
That was it, thank you.
Okay, any reports from commissioners? All right. So in that case, I think we're adjourned until a week from today at 5:30 at the Brunard Park City Hall. Thank you. Thank you all.